Call the meeting order, real call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Solia.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Need a motion please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion at second to adjourn to executive session, any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I make a motion, we adjourn from executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion at second to adjourn from executive session, any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Kara.
Ladies and members, stand for the invocation, pledge of allegiance please.
Will you please bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I would ask anyone that would like to speak to please fill out a speaker's sheet in the back and give it to our town clerk who will get it up to me. First up tonight Barbara Manning. Barbara, you want to talk now, or yeah, or later at the second call? Either one?
Good evening council members and Mayor Rankin. My name is Barbara Manning. I reside at 3939 North Monument Drive Florence Arizona. When the word came out that the high school pool would no longer be available to the residents of Florence, and nor would the library, I thought it was excellent that the town council considered alternatives and options to fill that void. I completely support a community pool and a library for Florence. I have to admit that some of that support began to dwindle when I saw the scope of the project, and the process by which it was being determined. As to the scope, a prior town council considered a pool and the budget was 2.2 million. Now this council envisions an aquatic center for 7.5 million. I looked at your recreation department attendance records, and what I found, I looked down at my notes here. This season, 978 residents used the pool at the high school for open swim. If you include the swim team and swim lessons, that would bring it to 1,085 using the pool. This record of usage does not demonstrate to me the need for such an expensive aquatic center, even if annexation does take place. Now as to the process, this project of aquatic center, fitness center, recreation, and library was first discussed on June 2nd. That's two and a half months ago. And I'm hearing that there will be a vote on this project on August 18th. And this project now has a price tag of $16 million. I say to myself that we must carefully plan this project. I don't believe two and a half months is sufficient time to do it and take a vote. Of course, I don't know what your vote actually is going to be, but I'm a little concerned. One of the things that has to be-
Barbara, can you speed it up a little bit?
Time?
Yeah.
Why? Okay. In conclusion, I think there are many things to be considered, and if, I would like to see you postpone that vote and have a committee of not only staff, but town people look over the plans for the center. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry? Larry Patrick? Your turn Larry, you want now or later?
No, I'll do now. I just wanted to, you know, I missed that meeting and I called you and told you why, and it was one of those events that I couldn't avoid, and I'm sorry I missed it, but I just want to remind you guys that you're talking about spending our money, and I want to remind you of a couple of things. One, the taxpayers in Florence Unified School District turned down the budget override three times. There's a message in that for you. I think we are in support of putting in a pool. We understand that since you can't use the one at the high school, I think that's a great idea. And we need the library, and that's a good thing to do, but we'd like to exercise a little discrimination in how we spend the money to build those two items, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you Larry. Okay Ruth, I cannot say your last name, I'm not even going to try it. You can do it.
Ruth Walcheski, 4033 North Monument Drive.
Thank you.
I too agree with the community pool and the library, and I think it's needed. However, this expensive, well not exotic, but-
Can you stick into your mic?
This expensive aquatic center has to be justified. I wanted to know too why the big rush, and why did the town staff go out for bids to contractors before the vote for the project was taken by the town council? Also, how much of the aquatic center expenditures is coming from development impact fees, and what percentages of those fees were paid by Anthem? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Karen? Oh, there you are.
Karen Chappell, I live at 6665 West Stony Quail Way Florence Arizona. I just wanted to give my firsthand observation on when I saw the price tag for the aquatic center. I work at the Florence High School, I work from 9 to 2 daily, Monday through Friday. I walk past that pool every day during the week, and in four years' time, I have seen two, on two different times where the pool has been used. So my question is, why again, do we need such an expensive pool? I agree also, the town needs a pool, and I agree about the library, because I myself am a library user and much in favor of it. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get off the pool a minute. Charles Smith.
Governor, this is the item number 18.
Okay, you'd like to speak during that? Thank you Charles.
Wagener.
Wagener.
7350 West Silver Spring Way. I've just got two questions. One of these cowboys that recently moved down here from South Dakota and like to say you're a fool and his money is soon parted, but I would like to add, what percent of the property taxpayers in this district come from the Sun City area? Would be the one question. The second question is the CFDs. It's a $3,500 fee that unbeknown to the fat guy, when we bought our place over there, has to be paid. Try and find out what it's for, and it says, "Refer to your information," and Pulte will tell you. Home buyers in Anthem will benefit by using the public infrastructure. So my question is, those dollars, are they spent on infrastructure in the city of Florence or throughout the Florence city?
I can't answer that. It'd be a, if you want to hang around and call the public, I can answer that, but I can't answer that because it's not on our agenda tonight. Okay, fine. I'm sorry. No, not a problem. And the other, it'll be mailed out, the answer? Uh-
We'll talk to staff.
We'll talk to, we'll have staff talk to you about that. Just to talk to you about. Okay. Phil Hollins. You want to wait until that comes up now Phil, or do you want to do it now?
I can talk about the CFD right now.
Okay.
Do you have a different station? My name is Phil Hollins, 25374 North Poseidon Road, the Magic Ranch. Just listening to what the ladies were saying about the pool, I understand where their concerns are coming from, because from what I've read in the article from the Tri-Valley Central, I'm hearing, even though the town has the money to pay for the pool, they're looking at bonding around $5 million of that. And so you've also had people that are talking about, well, this is three, you know, we can do this at 3%, or if that's the case, this is additional money that the people in the town are going to have to pay for, not just, you know, one segment or something, or people who live directly in the town, but everybody who's 20 miles, 30 minute drive away from the pool. And like they said, this is also going to affect the people in Anthem, because the people in Anthem already have a pool and a rec center, but I'm pretty sure they're going to be bonded on this also. I don't know what, to what degree, maybe it might be subsidized or somewhat, however, that is an issue. And my question is, right now that I'm hearing is 16 million instead of 12 to 13 million, which I can understand there are some give and take, but the problem is, is that, you know, that 16 million dollars is going to quickly turn to something else, all right? And the people that you're looking at annexing, basically don't, really don't have a voice in this, all right? So even the folks in the town don't have a voice in that, so that's my concern.
Thank you. Albert, did you want to speak during the regular meeting on item 8C?
Yes, for the regulation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ruth Harrison Florence Arizona. I'm here tonight to say a few words about a subject that came up at the council's work session last Thursday. The discussion included lots of questions and some answers about the proposed library and aquatic center. You talked about adding a recreation building, which would include space dedicated to weightlifting exercise and treadmills. The town manager said, an additional recreation building like that would add about $2 million to the cost of the entire project. One of the council members suggested that the new building be constructed and that the existing exercise center on Main Street be sold, so that a business could move into that space. I thought about that for a while and then realized that people aren't exactly lining up to buy Main Street buildings to start businesses, I'm sorry to say. If the existing exercise facility were to move, there would be a lot less activity on Main Street than there is now, and Main Street needs more activity, not less activity. So, please consider leaving the exercise center on Main Street, where it is now, until Main Street begins to attract more businesses, and when the town can more easily afford to spend another $2 million or so. In the meantime, the space between the library and the aquatic center can be used to build a labyrinth for quiet meditative walks, and a set of stairs for more active outdoor exercise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public would like to speak during the first call to the public?
Denise Colvert Florence. I want to know where all these interested people from Anthem were when we had three meetings, where presentations were made, where pictures were up, what this was going to be about, where were the questions when those meetings were held? I was at every one of them, and I never saw any of these people. To come here tonight, when this is in progress, and say the things they've said is wrong. They've got theirs, they don't care about the people down here. I do. I want this to go through. Our kids, our seniors, and our teenagers need this project. They have nothing. And when that pool closes, they're going to have less than nothing. Please, please, don't let these naysayers stop this project.
Thank you Denise. All right, all right.
You know, I just have a question about the timing of the vote. You know, a big chunk of the money from this, for this pool is going to come out-
Can you state your name sir?
Oh, my name is John Dantico. 55887 Dionysus Drive. The timing of this looks like it's, you guys in the town, historic, the current town, are going to be paying, are asking for, to obligate the rest of the community, if it's annexed, to pay for this thing, but we're not really getting a voice, we're not really voting, we didn't vote for this or you guys, and yet we're going to be called upon to pay for it. Is the bonding district that was mentioned in the newspaper gonna relegate it to the current town, like a special bonding district, or is it for everybody in the new town?
Thank you John. Any other member of the public? Uh oh. Donna?
This might be hard for me to say, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Donna Rankin, and I live at 345 West Highway 287 in Florence Arizona. This really, really is disturbing to me, because we're all Florence. We don't care where you live. You know, my Little League program, it's a struggle every year because I get, well we're in Anthem, well we live in Florence, well we this, well we that. We're all Florence you guys. That's what we need to think about, is all of Florence. I don't care if you live over there, over there, or over there. We're all Florence. We all work together. And I can understand the funds and all of that kind of stuff, sort of, because I don't really get into it. But it really irritates me whenever you guys stand up here and say, well in Anthem, and well in Florence, we're all Florence folks, please remember that. All of these people up here, they work for Florence. They work for Anthem, they work for South, North, East, and West Florence.
That's the shortest time I've heard her talk. Has there any other member of the audience have any question, anything? See no movement, I'll call, close, call to the public, public presentation. Maria, or Charles, who's going to read them?
Myself here.
Excuse me Mayor. Excuse me.
Were you going to allow council to respond to any public comment?
Uh, call to the council, that's when we have to do it.
I thought council may respond to blah 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 blah.
Criticism?
That's okay, I can wait till this-
Now, if you want to do, if you want to respond to what you consider criticism, yes.
Um, I, you know, the only thing I wanted to say is there's, there's some very good questions there, and a lot of them we have taken into consideration, and I would expect the town to do some type of a press release to address some of those questions, but we did consider a lot of the things that you guys are bringing up today, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on with public presentations.
Mayor and Council, 8. Public hearings and presentation. An issuance of proclamation declaring August 2014 as Child Support Awareness Month. Ms. Bertha Castro from Child Support Services is here to accept this proclamation, and I will read it into the record, Mayor. Child Support Awareness Month, August 2014. Whereas since 1995, the United States has been honoring Child Support Awareness Month during the month of August, and past President Bill Clinton stated that providing for our children is one of humanity's worthiest, and most fundamental endeavors. Children are the best part of ourselves, the sum of our past and the promise of our future, that guarantee our lives and values and dreams will flourish long after we're gone. And, whereas, Child Support Awareness Month is a time to salute parents who work hard to ensure their children grow up in stable homes and look forward to a bright future. And, whereas, Child Support Awareness Month is aimed at spotlighting the important role parents play in supporting their children physically, mentally, and emotionally, and is also aimed at recognizing the many parents and child support professionals that work hard to improve the lives of children affected by parental separation. And whereas, with the focus of partnering being of great importance, the Department of Economic Security is changing the name of the Division of Child Support Enforcement to the Division of Child Support Services. With the division taking the steps to effectively educate and train all child support staff and partners to provide positive customer engagement, and having available quality supported services within the community, to effectively aid parents as they work to meet physical development, emotional growth, and economic stability of Arizona's children. Now therefore, I Tom Rankin, Mayor of the Town of Florence Arizona, do hereby proclaim August as Child Support Awareness Month in the Town of Florence Arizona, and urge all citizens to come forward and do something positive that will help support, help support those children in care.
Bertha, on behalf of the town council, I'd like to present this proclamation to what Charles just read. I'm not going to reread it. I think you know how I feel about child, child enforcement, child support enforcement. I worked with a child support division for 14 years or so, enforcing and taking, getting the deadbeat parent to come in. The child support division for Penale County collected a lot of money. Under the current county attorney, that program was turned back over to the state. And the money that was collected, you've got to remember, it's money that you would have been paying for if it hadn't been collected. But the kids are where the, in my opinion, when we can help the kids, whatever we can do to help a child better themselves, be able to get a new pair of shoes, go to a doctor, whatever, that's what we need to do, and I think it's through the child support division. You guys are doing a heck of a job, we want you to keep it up. And again, on behalf of the town council and myself, thank you very much for the good job you're doing. Thank you Florence Town Council.
My name is Bertha Castro, and I am the Child Support Office Manager for Penale Region. On behalf of the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, I am honored to receive this proclamation. We greatly appreciate knowing that we have your support as we work to provide child support services to Arizona's children. Currently, we have more than 186,000 cases that need our services. Approximately 5.8% of those cases are here in Penale County. Even though we continue to have challenging economic hardship, this state fiscal year, we were able to collect more than $35 million for the families we are serving. But our work does not end here. There are still many children who need our continuing services, and we cannot do it alone. It takes everyone in this room, your community, and people in all capacities across the state to help us. Your proclamation means a lot to us. I thank you for your continued support as we work to help Arizona's children. Thank you Tom.
Item 8B, issuance of a proclamation declaring August 2014 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. I'm going to read the proclamation into the record, but I don't know if there's anybody here to accept it, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, drowning impact awareness month, August 2014. Whereas drowning impact awareness month will raise awareness that number and impact of child drownings in Arizona affects everyone. And whereas the drowning incidents in Arizona take the lives of the equivalent of a classroom of children each year. And whereas a child drowning can happen to any family regardless of education, race, or socioeconomic background. And whereas families can take simple steps to protect their children around water, to avoid tragedy of the unnecessary loss of life. And whereas, water safety remains a priority for Arizona families, communities, and government, and water watchers at Phoenix Children's Hospital. And whereas, children, keeping children healthy and safe is the goal of water watchers at Phoenix Children's Hospital, fire departments, and other prevention institutions in Arizona. Raising awareness will increase understanding and education of effective ways to prevent drownings. Now therefore, I Tom Rankin, Mayor of the Town of Florence Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 1st through 31st 2014 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month in the Town of Florence Arizona.
You know, that proclamation hits home to a lot of people that have ever been involved with a drowning. I was lucky in my career that I only had to do two drownings in 24 years with law enforcement. Firefighters go to, up in the municipalities, see that almost on a daily or weekly basis. Whatever we can do, whether it be being more aware of where our children are around pools, putting up better fencing around your pool, putting up some sort of alarm system, whatever we can do to prevent one child from drowning is what we've got to do. When you say two seconds is too long, they mean it. So folks, when you're, when you're walking around your neighborhood and you're saying, if you see something wrong, get a hold of the police department, get a hold of the fire department, let us check it out to make sure that no innocent person, no innocent little child that has never had a chance to mess up like I have dies. Thank you.
Item 8C, public hearing on a request by United Engineering Group on behalf of Palms Magic Ranch AD LLC on an application to replace the existing planned unit development zoning with a new planned unit development. The Ashburn at Magic Ranch PUD is a planned single-family residential community of approximately 80 acres that is generated located west of Mitchell Trail, south of Arizona Farms Road, and east of the Union Pacific Railroad. This case is contingent upon the annexation of the property in the Town of Florence per pending annexation 2013-01. First reading of ordinance number 613-14 and ordinance of the Town Florence, Penale County, Arizona approving the Ashburn at Magic Ranch planned unit development, PZC-20-14-PUD. Mr. Eppoff.
Mayor Member, Mayor Members of the Council, I have about 14 items on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to kind of get, try to give you an abbreviated presentation on each of these items, particularly in light of the fact that you actually have seen many of the stuff, many of these items before, either through a development agreement that came before you, or a general plan amendment, or something similar. But the first case we have tonight is the Ashburn 80 acre master plan community, and we actually have referenced this particular development in a development, pre-annexation and development agreement recently. It is a site that already has zoning in the county under the Magic Ranch master plan, and they decided that upon coming into the Town of Florence, should the Magic Ranch annexation be successful, they would like to improve upon the plan, so they did a redesign, they lowered the density of the project, and also designated a four acre public safety site there, the Blue Site. For a point of reference, this site is actually right behind that mini storage facility that's on Arizona Farms Road. And you have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this, and also tonight is just a public hearing. Action will be at a subsequent meeting. Be happy to address any questions.
Any member of the council have any questions that they would like to ask, Mark? Okay, at this time I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Dare?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. My name is Albert Dare. My primary residence, as people know, is in Tempe, Arizona, but I'm proud to say that my second home is in a place that some people may not have ever heard of in a long time, and that's my little home on the range is in Magic Ranch, okay? Long before they had the, not Magic Ranch, but the Magma Ranch, okay? Back in the old days, before there was a magic, there was a man. Can't say it. But anyway, these are going to be my new neighbors, I hope, and yes, I look at, I see a lot of spaces for a lot of people. And one of the reasons I moved out to Magma Ranch, that was my little place and dream. Excuse me. Like so many people, to be out in- Like so many people to be out in the country, you know, where you kind of let the chickens run wild. Well, and one of the things over the years that I've owned that piece of property that's to the southeast of this development, one of the joys that I've had is the fact that the wild horses from somewhere come out and they go cross my property. And I don't know, you might think that's an honor, but I think it is, okay? That the wild horses would choose me to go across on. So anyway, I'm in favor of this development. I know there are negative things about having the development, and I weigh those, but there are also positive things. I'll hate to give up all my horses and things like that, but that's okay. Progress and change. I've asked the council to consider this development. I appreciate the company that's trying to do it. And I do apologize on behalf of all the people, someone in that neighborhood, whoever, wherever they are, and where they're from, they think that on the east side of that big piece of property, that's where you dump your mattresses, okay? And on the west side, that's where you take your old couch. So I'll sure be looking forward to seeing that stuff go away. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith, did you want to speak now, or was there a certain one that you wanted to talk on?
Item 8D.
D? Okay. Does any other member of the public have anything they'd like to say on this topic? Are you going to now close the public hearing?
Item 8D, public hearing on a request by the Arizona State Land Department, request to change the existing zoning on approximately 320 acres from single residential ranchette R1-R to planned unit development PUD. The Lookout Mountain 2 PUD proposes underlining zoning of multifamily residential and highway business commercial on the property which is generally located south of Arizona Farms Road, east and adjacent to the Gila River Indian Community, and west of the Union Pacific Railroad. The subject site is also bisected by Hunt Highway. This case is contingent upon the annexation of the property into the Town of Florence per pending annexation 2013-01. First reading of ordinance number 614-14 and ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the Lookout Mountain 2 planned unit development, PZC-21-14-PUD. Mr. Ekoff.
Mayor members of the council, the town tonight is acting on behalf of the Arizona State Land Department on this request. Back in 2007, we were talking about Florence's growth over time, including how we would grow ultimately, hopefully into the southern portion of the Superstition Vista's area. With that discussion led a discussion of a variety of other state land parcels that were within our planning area. Some of them were islands surrounded by town properties, some of them were right on the edge of the town. Through that process, in 2007, we started to amend the general plan. In 2008, the general plan land use designation that's sitting on the property today was applied on this property, showing high-density residential and commercial land uses envisioned for the future. In 2009, the town entered into a development agreement with the State Land Department. And in that development agreement, they said that if the town chose to annex all of the specified parcels that they owned, we would then in turn work with them to ensure that upon annexation, these properties receive specified zoning. So this is the last remaining parcel of that action that started back in 2007, was ratified through the general plan, which also went to the voters, which had the land use ratified by the voters, and then the development agreement to remember in 2009. Most of the other parcels all came into the town, they received the zoning that was defined for them. The one state land parcel that we had initially been working on in the middle of Merrill Ranch was pulled out at the last moment, but all the ones that we got permission to annex, this is the last one, because this one actually took a couple of steps to get to. It was disconnected by some other land. So it was included in the Magic Ranch annexation. And so by that agreement and per the general plan and per the development agreement with the State Land Department, we're here tonight saying that if the property goes, if the annexation for Magic Ranch goes forward, we are keeping our commitment to the State Land Department and our contractual obligation to State Land Department to provide the zoning indicated on the property, which is PUD, but within that PUD is plans for commercial and multifamily land uses on the property. So the caveat on this property, obviously, is that it is state land, and there is no, you know, there's not a huge market today for that amount of commercial in this area and in that configuration. There's definitely not a huge market for the multifamily that are indicated there. As much as we want to admit that the State Land Department probably is not going to do anything to auction or sell off this land for many, 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 many years to come, and if they do, I would suspect that the more likely candidate that would be interested in this property is going to say, hey, they're building single-family homes all around me, State Land Department, would you consider auctioning this property for single-family home development? That's the more likely scenario. That said, we're kind of in a situation where the public, the public today has expressed concerns about the proposed zoning on this property. And, you know, we've received many comments through the Planning and Zoning Commission process. But again, we're zoning this tonight based on the general plan that was approved by the voters and then also the development agreement that the town entered into in 2009. So we are in a little difficult situation working with the state. And ultimately, Planning and Zoning Commission has sent you also on this case a favorable recommendation. And tonight is just the public hearing on this case tonight.
Does any member of the council have any question? Mark? Mark, in your expert opinion, and I know we have a lot of people associated with the housing industry here with us tonight, when were the multifamily unit or area, when was that designated, 2009?
The general plan, Mayor Council, the general plan designation in 2007 actually had high-density commercial on it. It was modified to what it is still today in 2008, and that's the version that went to the voters when the general plan was adopted in 2010. The development agreement that committed that upon annexation, they receive a zoning, that was done in 2009.
Okay, thank you. Any other member have anything, Mark? Does any member of the public, Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Smith, I reside at 5492.
Mayor, would you just make a statement of opening it up for public hearing?
Oh, let me open it up. Go ahead, it's open.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor, Town Council members, constituents. My reference is about to give, is for the Gila River Nation. And I have an excerpt here taken from the Gila River website, and it's in relation to District 4, which butts up against this PUD here that you're seeing. District 4 is also known as the Santan District. It is large and unique in that it is comprised of eight district villages, Olberg, Santan, Upper and Lower, Satonic, I hope I pronounced that right, Chandler High, Skeela Bluff, Goodyear, and East Long Boot villages. The Santan Mountain Range play a role in the history of District 4, as do many other aspects of the land that surround the community. The Mountain Range tells a story that connects the people with the land, not only as a striking landmark, but also through stories that are passed down from the elders from the mountains. And this influence and shape the people of this part of the Gila River Indian Community. The district is 119 square miles and has seen the most industrial growth of any of the districts. District 4 boundaries contain an array of world-class sports and recreation venues, as well as a host of tribal, commercial, and agricultural businesses that are owned and operated by the community. The Magic Ranch annexation has a boundary with the Sovereign Gila River Nation at District 4. In 1986, the Salt River community was forced to shut down the northbound lane of Pima Road in response to Skystill erroneous railway alignment of the Pima Freeway on tribal land. This cost the Arizona transportation over $200 million to use the nine-mile stretch of land for about six months. The Town of Florence plans to do, or is my understanding, is to do something similar by rerouting the Hunt Highway and Arizona Farms Road traffic intersection adjacent to the Gila Nation. If Florence doesn't coordinate their intent with the Gila River Sovereign Nation, then the question is, could the same fate impact the Hunt Highway realignment? Is there a convention with the Gila River Nation's Department of Land and Water Resources, Land Use Planning and Zoning Office, and the Town of Florence? As a Good Neighbor Initiative, is the Town of Florence in conversation or in convention with the Gila River Nation about its annexation petition to the state? What is the relationship with the Gila River Nation and the Town of Florence on the Magic Ranch annexations and the rezoning of the State Land Trust adjacent to the Gila River Nation? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the council or the public have any comment? Seeing the movement, I'll close the public hearing on item D.
Mayor?
Yes.
Members of the...
John?
Hello. My name is John Danico, live at 5597 East Dionysus. And I've come to understand since this annexation process began, several months later, that this parcel of ground was going to come in to the town upon annexation based on a five-year-old pre-annexation development agreement. What I'm seeing here is a pattern of the town reaching out, whether it's a pool, whether it's this hunk of ground right here, getting things done upon annexation. And the way that the timing of the thing works is that financial value of properties around there get destroyed, and we get charged additional money, but we're not represented in the decision-making process, we're not represented in the planning process. And for us in that particular region, I live right over to the east of that property, right adjacent to it, it's negative for us. It's not in our best interest. Yet we're getting hit financially on multiple levels, and then we find out about it after 40% of the annexation has come and has already been signed on the petition. Now, at the meeting, we specifically asked, in the 9/13 meeting, how was this being pitched to the town, the current Town of Florence? These things, none of these things were brought up, although it was in your information. It's a type of fraud by concealment from my perspective. And I voiced my concerns to the mayor, and, you know, a gracious man, I appreciate the people I met with, they were all, every person I met in his town has been just wonderful. And I really mean that from the bottom of my heart. I have really enjoyed meeting you guys and the diligence in your planning, but for me, economically, this is going to be a hit. And it's just a continuous death by 10,000 cuts that I see coming down the pike. And so that's what I'm talking about, is the political process here that I think is just not just, it's not good. It's not good for me, not good for my neighbors. And so as you're pondering this thing, growth, yeah, growth may be good, maybe it's not always good. It's not good for me in this case, not good for my neighbors.
John, let me ask you a question. How do you feel that you're going to be economically impacted by this?
Well, once people learn that the property value, almost everybody who was, once people learn that there's multi-unit development coming, possibly three-story apartments, possibly subsidized housing, we have, there's, you know, plans on the drawing board, most of the people who moved in that area moved to get away from that type of property. And now we got right in our backyard. Or that's what the plan is. And the growth, you know, maybe it's several years down the road, but it's still going to be, so what's going to come up down there? Oh, well, there's planned unit development with multifamily. Oh, man, we want to stay away from that. I understand Mr. Ekoff has stated, and several of the town planners, you know, there'll be buffers and so forth, but it doesn't take away from it. Wherever you end up with that high-density stuff, just look at the crime rates that go up. Well, that means we've got to pay more for taxes for more police. Again, another cut by, that's going to bleed us out. That's where the destruction comes in.
Okay, let me take it back to something you said in Section 8 Housing. Do you believe in your heart that a developer would pay the high price that the State Land Department is going to be asking for that, to put in Section 8 Housing? There's a whole bunch of them, sit right back over in the corner, go over there and ask them. They're the developers that are representing a lot of the developments going on that we're talking about tonight. Section 8 Housing goes on everywhere. It's here, I don't doubt it, there may be some out where you live. And Section 8 Housing does not run it down. That's your property, your homeowner's association is supposed to regulate what happens on that property. If you have a problem with Section 8 Housing, you need to talk to your homeowner's association by doing your rules, enforcing your rules. I'm sure that we have Section 8 Housing in Anthem. We don't know. That's nothing that comes before the Town Council. That is something between the United States Government and that homeowner. It's not the town. As far as multi-housing out there in that property, and you and I will probably be worm-eating by the time that was ever happened. But I, for the life of me, even though it's zoned that way, I can tell you that the council that will come after this council, if it comes to multi, excuse me, multi, in an area that's surrounded by single-family units, I don't know if any council would go for that. And I think that the state land, even though it's zoned this, they'll take a look at it and say, hey, we can make more money by or if, because that's what they're regulated to do. State land has said, get as much money for their land as they can. And I think every one of them sitting back there would tell you that single-family units are where the most money is compared to apartments. We have one apartment complex out in your area. It's at Magma Road and Hunt Highway. As far as I know, that's the only apartment complex out there. It's a real nice place, it's across the road, it's not from Copper Basin, I believe, or somewhere out in that area. But I don't see the property values going down out there because that apartment's over there. And as far as Section 8 Housing, John, there's nothing wrong with it. The people need a place to live. I have not heard of one property whose value went down because there was a Section 8 house next to it. I don't know if you have or not. Have you? Do you know of any that I could go and talk to and say, your property value went down because of Section 8 housing next to you?
I'd have to do a survey on it.
And I'm going to guarantee you, the only way it's gone down is the homeowner's association has allowed the property owner to not enforce their, your code ordinances or whatever leads and restrictions. And when they rent it out, it's their responsibility. And it's your homeowner's responsibility to stay on the property owner. Now, if you have three houses in a row, they're all Section 8 housing and they're all down, weeds in their front yard and cars parked in there and everything, that's where your homeowner's association needs to go after the property owner.
This particular parcel wouldn't be in that homeowner's association that I'm a part of. We have no voice in that particular, whatever homeowner's association may or may not be developed there.
But you will have a voice down the road, once this has started to develop, with a council that's on board at that time, and the planning department that's on, and the State Land Department, you'll have more of a voice because you live there. And you'll be listened to. It's, this council, this council, I will say, is very receptive to anybody that wants to talk to us, and will try to get the information out. But when we're talking about the possibility of values devaluing your property because you live next to a Section 8 house...
It's not only Section 8, it's the multi-development. I don't want to be labeled as somebody who's just opposed to Section 8, or somehow opposed to poor people, or somehow opposed to people who need subsidized housing, because that's not the case.
Well, I understand that, John, but what I'm saying is you've left the impression that Section 8 housing will devalue your property.
No, multi-unit will devalue the property. And why have it rezoned, then, if it's not going to make an impact? Why do it?
Okay.
You know, that's, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just, I don't want to be painted a particular way. I made my statement, it's pretty clear, I don't like the process, okay? And when you guys are voting and thinking about these things and coming up with these ideas, you know, I'm there, and then this gets sprung on us, you know, we kind of get it sprung out the opposite way that we didn't, that we asked for it, we didn't ask for it. Maybe somebody in Magic Ranch down in Oasis maybe did, we don't know, but not in that community, I can assure you, at Iron Horse.
Mayor, if I can add a couple of comments?
Who want to comment?
I just wanted to say that the town is also limited in designating what is going to be out there. I mean, we have to work with developers, and we can't, so to say, mandate that they put any particular thing on their piece of property. They're the property owners, we work with them the best that we can in order to get the best fit in that area. We're working off of a town plan that's been implemented years ago on the projection of what's going out there, so, you know, what they're asking for isn't beyond what's been discussed. I think the other point that I wanted to bring up, too, is as far as moving out to a piece of property within the county and the valuation of the property, if you look to your north, you're going to see thousands of people that see an advantage to being within sight of a municipality. They may be intentionally moved out there to get out to the country, away from all of this stuff, but I think that what they're finding is they're missing out on a lot of the services and the representation that they don't get without being part of the municipality.
Ruben, did you have something? Tom? Tara?
I do. Mark, I have a question. Where it says it's noted that the PATA commits to not increase development impact fees for the subject site for the first ten years of the fifteen-year term of the PATA, this agreement also places a $1,500 cap on single-family home permit fees. Why is that substantially less than other impact fees throughout the communities?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe that, are you referring to a PADA on a future agenda item?
You know what, I did, I flipped over to 10E, so I apologize.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to misspeak.
We'll get to that here in a minute.
Phil Hollins, Magic Ranch. One thing, real quick, I wanted to say something, what John was talking about. When you're talking about Section 8 Housing, all right, first of all, let's go back. We talked about high-density residential versus multifamily housing. From what I've heard, they're basically the same thing, all right? There's not really much difference. So then you ask yourself, well, why in the world would you go ahead and change it if there's no difference? If you're going to get the same product, why do you change it? Well, my background, you know, I have a bachelor's in social and criminal justice, so therefore I'm sitting here and I understand how this process works when you start looking at multifamily housing, and how the grants are impacted, how the HUD, you know, the incentives are there, all right? And that's the difference, so you know you're looking at low-income Section 8 housing. Now, there's nobody against the low-income Section 8, people that live in Section 8 housing. However, when you also look at the incidents that happened in Queen Creek, when Queen Creek built these nice luxury apartments, all right, they built it, but nobody came, all right? Nobody showed up. So what they had to do, you just can't let apartments sit there for no reason, you got to, you know, people want, you know, you've got investors out there, they want that money. So therefore, what are you going to do? They opened it up to Section 8. As soon as they opened up to Section 8, it wasn't the residents that were causing the problems, it was the people who were not on the contracts that lived there with them causing the problem. It was the gang members, it was the drug dealers, it was the people who were just getting out of the prisons, et cetera, who were not on the lease, and those are the type of things that we're talking about, and that brings your value down, all right? Because now, when you're talking about putting four police officers in our community, you're going to have to put a lot more people out there, all right? And that's going to mean more taxes. So that's one of the main arguments there. So our question is, where, you know, I mean, at some point, there's called a housing strategy, and then that's housing strategy process, if we were part of that back then, then we wouldn't have been able to actually say, hey, this is one of our concerns. You know, we do have some people out in our community that are educated, not necessarily college-educated at all, but we do have people that have lived in different areas and had to move away from them, because somebody had that property value out in their community, and their house was $200,000, and as soon as that Section 8 Housing showed up there, then property value went down to $100,000. This is my neighbors telling me that, all right? And that's why we as neighbors, not opposition groups, but we as neighbors are sitting out here, going back and forth, speaking for the other neighbors that can't walk up and down the street and et cetera, all right? So there are values, and if you look at any study, there's another study out there, and if there's any police officer that's telling you that there's not going to be any crime and stuff in Section 8 Housing, I like to meet him, you know, and shake his hand and find out where he works, because evidently, he's not working on a real beat. So that's my talk about that. Anyway, that's not why I came up here, I came up here for something else and to talk about the plan. Now, I want to make sure you understand that this is not something directed at you, maybe this is something that I feel, and this is something that my neighbors look at, okay? All right? And if you, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but I want you to understand how we feel, all right? You see, Florence leaders want their plan to be your plan, all right? They don't really care about your plan as long as it doesn't interfere with their plan, all right? It doesn't matter if you moved out here for the peace and quiet, Florence leaders want their dreams to be your dreams. It doesn't matter if you moved here to get away from the crime and gang activity, maybe Florence leaderships don't realize that they're going to bring the crime and gang activity to you under the guise of apartment zoning, and that's where we go back to the Section 8, not against the people. You then have to demand increased saturated patrols, police presence to handle that crime, which will tear your back door, which means more taxes. Last September, the town's leadership threw out a few promises, such as accountability, fix your roads, build the parks, basically all to pacify us. We were told that we would, that they wanted to provide services that we've been begging for, all right? I've yet to hear about accountability problems existing in our community, or the roads that are such in despair, I've looked for them. However, when I drive around the old town, I see very little accountability when I see cars sitting on sidewalks, semi-truck tires still leaning against people's homes a year later, front yards littered with trash, and if I walk outside this building, again, no disrespect to you all, but my parking lot, my own roads look a lot better than this parking lot, so I'm looking for that accountability there, all right? They stated that we would only have to pay property taxes, but they forgot to mention about the vendors, such as water, cable, phones, electricity, et cetera, will be charged in franchise or user fees in addition to the new taxes, which undoubtedly will be passed on to you, all right? Or how potential bonds, such as the Aquatic Center, which we mentioned earlier, will be involved, all right? And one big thing and stuff that we're pushing this about our neighborhood is because, I know you guys can't talk about this, but you've got a lawsuit hanging over your head, a big one, all right? And the thing is, is that, and if something happens with that lawsuit, who are the bondholders, and how are you going to pay for that? If you've got to pay that large one to a particular mining company, who's going to be dealing with that, all right? Who's got to pay it? And that's some of the things and stuff that we're sitting here thinking about, you know, what in the world is going on here? So that's what we talked about as far as transparency is concerned. See, this is, some people think this is the way of, the American way of life, but it's not. It's a concept of a select few individuals to enforce their goals on our community in the guise of the Growing Smarter Initiative. And lastly, in order to know what you want, as I said before, you have to ask us, not when all of a sudden you see the annexation possibly slipping between your fingers, or you're gain satisfaction achieving your 51% threshold, but at the beginning when it genuinely matters, like in September 2013, when we were told that the town has nothing to hide. That's what I call transparency. Thank you.
I have something to say. You know, this annexation is up to you. The council isn't going to make the decision, it's the people that live out there, so ultimately, it's going to be up to you. So, you know, we're trying to do what we are required to do by state law, and we're just, this is, we're really not changing a whole lot out there, because we can't by state law, we have to go with what's pretty much there, and I don't know about any realignment of Hunt Highway, I haven't heard that before, but if, you know, if the people want to be annexed, you will vote to be annexed, if you don't, you won't be, so, and we're not trying to pull any wool over anybody's eyes, I guarantee you, we're trying to be as open about this as possible, I guarantee that, I mean, but, I mean, on my end of it, and I know, I haven't heard any other councilman scheming on anything on this, it's just a heck of a process that we're having to go through along with you. This isn't an easy thing, you know, but-
There's one good thing about the democratic process, everyone has a right to their own opinion. We can sometimes agree, sometimes we don't agree, we can agree to disagree, but everybody has a right to their opinion, and it troubles me that we think only crime happens in Section 8 housing, but crime happens everywhere, I don't care where you live. There had a lady on TV today, who had a, I don't know how million-dollar closet she had, she was robbed. So crime happens everywhere, and I hate for us to stigmatize people based on our own assumptions, because everybody doesn't fit in that category.
The one thing that people ought to keep in mind, too, is this is a plan. If I told you how many times that we changed the plan on Merrill Ranch, and Jordan back there can tell you, she was one of the people that was working with us on Harrison Merrill's project where Anthem is today, and where the mine that you referred to, that if we lose it, it's going to cost us millions of dollars, and that's not true. Her lawsuit against us is going to cost the town of Florence millions of dollars at this time. But those are plans, plans that we try to look into the future and develop, and plans are made to be changed, and that's what we have to realize, that we have changed, it depends on the market, it depends on the mood of the council. So when we talk about a PUD or PAD, that's something that down the road, the developer, working in conjunction with the town planning and zoning staff, they make the determination if they need to change it or not, or if they want to leave it the same. But that's just a plan, and we all know that plans are made to be changed.
If I can add one other comment, too, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but even with you not in the town's limits right now, we are looking out for your best interests, and I don't know if you realize that you guys are directly up aquifer from, or down aquifer from that mine, so if anything went wrong in that mine, you guys would feel that part. That's your guys' water that we're protecting.
Any other, any other members of the council? Yes, sir. I mean, members of the public, I didn't mean to throw you up here with us.
Woody Rass, 25304, North Poseidon Road, Magic Ranch. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, I was just going to listen to everybody, but I had to say one thing, Mayor, you had mentioned that later on, that everybody will have a bigger voice. Well, I don't want to wait for later on, I want to voice my opinion now, and that is, I don't care how long it takes, or what scenario the developer's going to do, Section 8 Housing, I don't think they're talking about, if there's Section 8 Housing, it's going to bring an influx of crime right away, it's just the idea of that is a potential for bringing the increase in crime period. I just don't want the annexation to go through, and I'm against the annexation, thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, I was going to say, I wasn't going to say anything tonight. My name's Kathy Hargrove, and I live in Magic Ranch Mirage, and I've been here a long time, I've been here 12 years. Now, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but all this land from Johnson Ranch to 79 has been spoken for, in one way or another, to build housing. It's not coming up little by little, it's been selling and reselling and all that, so it's not anything new, it's been here for a long time. And as far as the state land, when the houses start coming in, the state can do what it damn well pleases, whether we're a town or not, right? What they want to build is their choice, not yours, and not ours. Unless we go to meetings, and I don't see a hell of a lot of people here tonight, excuse my French, but I've had it up to here, I like to get the information out, and I like to get it out correctly. We have nothing to do with some of these things that do go on, and neither do you. So I like for people to start listening, not sit in two-hour meetings and come away with a bunch of stuff that isn't true. So as far as housing, it's going to be what it's going to be. I mean, they've already designated it, it's been selling from one owner to another, things change, yes, plans change, we have some say, yes, and, you know, as far as the mine, that was a sneaky, underhanded trick the previous owner did, by making it so it would be a workable mine again. I'm not real thrilled that it might become to a lawsuit, and if we are in the part of Town of Florence, someone is going to have to pay for it. I don't want to, although I am for being annexed, because that's benefit to us, it's way better than being part of Santan Valley, where they have absolutely nothing and no educated people to run a town, not even a piece of dirt to call Town Hall, or anything else. So their new venture is making the Fire District, so they can control people's property tax. Well, thank God we're not part of that. You know, so, and I do know that you all listen to what residents say, there's a place over in town several years ago, one of the older community things, like, name slips my mind, but you change things because they asked you to. We changed the power lines with your help, they aren't going along Magic Ranch, those great, big, ugly, giant things, that would ruin our electronics and a lot of other stuff. So that was thanks to you guys, you helped a lot on that. So, but I just like people to get their facts straight before they go hauling off, telling a bunch of people door-to-door a bunch of crap. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? One more time, John, that's it?
Just real briefly, I, John Danico, 5597 East Dionysus, in regards to you guys protecting us, in relation to that mine, I'm grateful for that, and I think you guys are wise on doing that. I think that thing's a terrible idea, but it is a potential liability for us, and you can't deny that, okay? And again, talking about planning, somebody planned at some point for that mine to go through. Plans do have consequences, okay? To say that plans don't have consequences is absurd. You make a plan because you intend to get something done, okay? That's why we're opposing this particular rezoning. And so, by the way, thank you, thanks for opposing it, I think it's a terrible thing.
Thanks, sir. Any other? Before we go to the next item, I've been asked by a council member to take a five-minute recess. We'll be at recess for five minutes.
It's a public hearing?
And I'll close that public hearing. Thanks. Call the meeting back to order. All of you standing up, sit down. Go for the attorney, too.
Mayor, 8E. Public hearing on a request by the WLB Group Incorporated on behalf of Eldorado Arizona Farms LLC, for request, replace the existing planned unit development PUD zoning with a new planned unit development PUD. The Arizona Farms West PUD is planned mixed-use community of approximately 389 acres, generally located on the south side of Arizona Farms Road, east of Quail Run Alignment, north of the Heritage Road Alignment, and west of the Copper Basin Railroad. This case is contingent upon the annexation of the property into the Town of Florence per pending annexation 2013-01. First reading of ordinance number 616-14, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the Arizona Farms West Planned Unit Development, PZC- County, Arizona, approving the Arizona Farms West planned unit development, PZC-24-14-PUD. Mr. Eckoff.
Mayor, Council, there's a project called Arizona Farms, it's in Pinellas County today. It is, it is, has zoning on it today that looks, that looks like this, it's residential, a little, a couple of small commercial pieces, a couple of small employment pieces, a planned golf course. That's been out there, that zoning for oh, 10, 12 years or longer. The property owner that acquired the property today, actually, there's three property owners, the major one is Eldorado, and Langley is the second largest property owner, but they've been able to assemble this property and come up with a really attractive plan for it. The first, it's broken up into two because it falls within two annexations. So, Arizona Farms West PUD falls in the Magic Ranch annexation, and at this location, it's primarily going to be a residential development. There is a 20-acre planned town park, public park, a 14-acre planned school site dedication in this development, residential land uses, small pocket parks, HOA amenities, multi-use paths, and so forth. And when it comes together, it'll look like this. So, the east and west will merge to form, to form one, one community. And you're going to see this item on the agenda twice tonight, because on the later part of the agenda, there's a pre-annexation and development agreement for Arizona Farms West, and then also one for Arizona Farms East. Much more detail in your report and in your packet. At this time, though, I'd be happy to, to let you proceed to the public hearing if you desire, and be available to answer any questions you may have.
Any question for Mark? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Any comment on public, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm still Albert Dare, I haven't changed much, but these will be my new neighbors to the east, okay? And I look forward to seeing them in many ways. Although I look out there, and I, I do expect all this to come forth by November, don't you think? Or December? They'll have all these things in place? Yeah, no, probably about 10 or 20 years, you know, maybe even I'll be gone. But anyway, I look forward to it, but right now, I enjoy the cotton fields. You know, that was, the cotton fields in Arizona and Oklahoma were my inspiration, because I had to get out there and pick that cotton. And my mother told me that all I could do was stand in the middle of the field and say, there's got to be a better way to make a living. So, I consider that farm next to me on the east an inspiration. I hate to see it go, but I'll probably be gone before it gets gone, too. So, I am in favor of this, and if you don't mind for just one moment, I heard all this talk about Section 8. When we came here from Oklahoma, I want you to know, the most hated people in this state were the Okies. And as long as I have known, there have been rich folks looking down their nose at the poor folks. Okay? And just because you got up the pole, don't mean you have to look down the hill, okay? If you understand what I mean. Have kindness from one for another. Section 8 people are not crooks. Matter of fact, they have to undergo investigations every year in order to maintain that privilege. Some of them are veterans today that have served our country. I will not allow them to be trampled on. Poor folks deserve respect in every way, and they will not contaminate you. I promise. My mother told us, this was her motto, "We may be poor, but you do not have to be dirty", okay? Poor people have pride, too. Thank you.
Did you ever get your hands cut by a bull?
I'm sorry?
Did you ever get your hands cut by bulls?
I couldn't pick cotton for nothing, you know? I kept looking forward there to see how many I was going to have to pick in the next row, and it's been my whole day looking. And if it wasn't picking cotton, I had to chop the stuff, and I got, you know, I learned this, too, in my life, it isn't true that I got the row with all the weeds in it, okay? Sometimes in life, we think we did. I got all row with all the weeds in it, that's why I'm not doing as well as the other people. Well, that's not true either, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to go back to picking cotton again, either. Any other? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, here, how could I miss that shirt?
Hi, Mayor, and council members. My name's Fred Redman, and I'm at Oasis at Magic Ranch. The one thing that I'm seeing with all of these annexation proposals and whatever, is that I'm concerned about the roads that make the entrance into these projects. And the reason I'm interested in that is, right now, at Oasis at Magic Ranch, we have a community north of us that's really between us and Arizona Farms, but there's a lot of land in there, that is isolated, and there was supposed to have been a road built for them to have access, and it was never built by the, by the developer. And so, they use our streets, our side streets, to be able to make that entrance back to those, to that property. And so, I'm very concerned about when I see these different annexations that I don't recognize, and nor has anybody said anything about how we're going to enter, or what kind of roads are going to be put in, whether they're going to be coming from Arizona Farms, or whether they're going to be coming from Hunt Highway. And so, my concern is making sure that, I'm not against any of the annexations, but I am interested in how the access to those properties are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I remind folks, we're not here talking about the annexation, we're here talking about development agreements with the developers. We'll eventually get to the annexation after we get the signatures, but it's, we're talking about the development agreements with the developers at this time, that's what these hearings are about. I'll take your point on that, Mark, make sure our ingress and egress, or whatever that is, in and out, that's only in and out burger. But let's make sure on that, because that is a problem in some areas, okay? Any, yeah? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Item 8F. Public hearing on a request by the WB Group Incorporated on behalf of Eldorado Arizona Farms LLC, Langley Arizona Farms 150 LLC, Woofies RE Holdings LLC, David C. Phillips, COBGH Associates LLC, and Superstition Springs R14 Association, to replace the existing planned unit development zoning with a new planned unit development. The Arizona Farms East PUD is a planned mixed-use community of approximately 766 acres, generally located on the south side of Arizona Farms Road, north of the Heritage Road alignment, west of Felix Road, and east of the Copper Basin Railroad. This case is contingent upon the annexation of the property in the town of Florence per pending annexation 2013-02. First reading of an ordinance number 617-14, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the Arizona Farms East planned unit development, PZC-25-14-PUD. Mr. Eckoff.
Mayor, Council, this is the east half of the Arizona Farms PUD development. And this half has also various types of residential, some very, some lower residential, medium-density, higher-density residential plan, but it also, along the Arizona Farms frontage there, you'll see the red color, and that is commercial employment area. So, we made sure that we didn't lose any of the commercial employment that was in the previous plan that's been on the books in Pinellas County for some time. We also, I think you'll notice, the north-south corridor actually going through this development. So, it's the first project that we've dealt with from a zoning perspective, beyond the policy statement through our general plan, our land use mass, but from a zoning perspective of how we might ultimately deal with the north-south corridor going through our area. So, the owners have been, have been wonderful to work with, in fact, we've also been working with all the other owners in this area, just to try and find a way to get this particular segment of the corridor planned in this, in this area. So, what you see is a 400-foot wide corridor, and there's some language in the development agreement that, that addresses exactly how we work towards reserving that corridor and ultimately getting that corridor dedicated. The other attractive thing about this project is the, the light purple area on Felix Road is a five-acre site that would be planned for another public safety facility, which we envisioned would be a fire station with another police substation as necessary. Again, this development will have all of the usual open, open space that you'll see in a master-planned community, and there may also be opportunities for additional school sites in here after their consultations with Florence Unified School District. And as far as the roads are concerned, on this development and all the other developments, the good opportunity that we've had now is that we, we are dealing with folks that have substantial holdings. So, we've been trying to now piece them together and figure out how we can make the road leakages work. And, but you know, the situation that was created out there, it didn't, it didn't happen overnight, it's probably not going to be fixed overnight, but we've got a lot of parties that have substantial investments in here and the desire to make it better, because quite frankly, they're not going to be in a position to sell homes if they don't make it, if they don't make it better. But the Planning Commission also sent you a favorable recommendation on this item, and again, this is public hearing only for tonight.
Do you remember the council have any question, Mark? Mark, this is just another example of plans changing, wouldn't you say?
Mayor, members of the council, this is another example of plans changing, and obviously changing, changing for the better. We can see over time that the plan that was there with the massive golf course community, employment, commercial that was set inside the, inside the project instead of Arizona Farms Road, they had a completely different concept of what was going to happen. And this is a master plan, so they're taking about two sections of land, so even now, we can anticipate, they'll probably come in and fine-tune the plan over, over time. This is going to take some time to, to develop, and, but you know, the folks that we're dealing with now on this, on this development want this to be top-notch, and we're just very fortunate to be working with, with this group of people.
I agree with you. If they can do anything like they did in Maricopa, that's great. Any other question? This time I open the public hearing, any member of the audience have anything they'd like to say on this pre-annexation agreement? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Item 8G. Public hearing on a request by United Engineering Group on behalf of RMG Lucky Hunt LLC, for change to the existing zoning on approximately 65 acres from single residential ranch shed to planned unit development. The Reserve at Lookout Mountain PUD is proposed single-family residential community generally located on the west side of Hunt Highway at the Heritage Road alignment. This case is contingent upon the annexation of the property in the town of Florence per pending annexation 2013-01. First reading of ordinance number 618-14, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the Preserve at Lookout Mountain planned unit development, Mr. Eckoff.
Mayor, Council, another project that's in Magic Ranch, Ron McCray and some of his partners represent this piece of land. It is on the west side of Hunt Highway, you're fairly familiar with it, because we had a pre-annexation and development agreement with, just recently. But if you put this together along with a planned development to the south, and also the planned Fry's Grocery Center there on Hunt Highway, you can see how it's all coming together. So, we're putting together the pieces of the puzzle. So, this is a nice subdivision that has some various lot sizes, and also, they've done a great job in preserving some of the small hills that are in that area. And also, upon our request, they went over to the Heela River Indian Community and said, how can we approve upon the design of their, of our community? And one of our comments, and one of the things they had in the discussion with them, is to not have all your lots back the Heela River Indian Community. So, you don't just have a wall along the whole community where people can throw trash over, over the wall, or backwash your pools, or whatnot. They designed a really nice community where, where they were considerate to their, their neighbors, as we always are, working with them when we're, we're approaching their, their boundaries. But this is another example of the collaboration that's occurred with this property, the property to the south, and then the Barclay Fry's Shopping Center piece, all coming together there in one area. And again, you have a favorable recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission and public hearing tonight.
Any members of the council have any question? I guess I've got to, I've got to go back and ask the access to the property that was brought up. I'm kind of concerned about that, because it's going through other residential areas. How many units are planned in this development?
Mayor, Council, I don't have the packet right in front of me, but I can tell you, I can tell you with certainty is that they will have the, the access to the north side of the shopping center, they will have the access to the south side of the shopping center, they will have access from the subdivision plan to the south, and then, in the zoning and the, and in the development agreement as well, they still retain the opportunity to have direct access on that north part. So, for example, for that cul-de-sac that comes out to Hunt Highway, they could actually open that up if upon the traffic impact and analysis study, and the design of the preliminary plot, they, they decided that they needed more access. And that was a condition that they wanted to ensure that they had that opportunity if access became an issue to them, and so it was addressed in the zoning and the pre-annexation and development agreement. At the same time, though, at this point, they like the idea of having a more of a, a smaller-scale subdivision with, without the direct access on Hunt Highway. So, this is probably what they want to achieve, but if it doesn't work, they have the opportunity for additional access point.
Thank you. Another question. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public have anything? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Item 9, consent. All items indicated, indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A, approval accepting the register of demands any June 30, 2014, the amount of $2,452,387.59. B, authorization to enter into an assurance agreement for construction of subdivision improvements with D.R. Horton Incorporated. C, authorization to purchase a Ford Explorer for the Fleet Motor Pool from Chapman Ford in the amount not to exceed $30,623.94. D, authorization to purchase two Chevrolet Tahoe vehicles for the Police Department from Midway Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed $64,750. E, approval to enter into a lease agreement with Pinellas County Federal Credit Union to lease property located at 200 West 20th Street from the town of Florence. Mayor, that is your consent.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
9C.
9C? Any others? Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none, would?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item C. Tara?
Wayne, in our fleet pool, how many vehicles do we currently have?
Ms. Walters, Mayor, Council, the fleet pool located here at Town Hall includes three vehicles at this point in time, and that encompasses all of the administration, finance, additional overflow for Parks and Recreation. It is used by the Fire Department on a monthly basis, taken for training, in addition to community services.
And besides, I use it, too, twice a month.
So, there are three vehicles located here at Town Hall, of which one, at council's recommendation, will be assigned to me.
Okay. Are there any cars located anywhere else, or vehicles located anywhere else, other than the three at Town Hall?
There are other vehicles, two permanent vehicles that are assigned to, we can give you a list, Councilmember Walters, but there's definitely two additional ones in the parking lot that are assigned to the inspectors for community services, community development, sorry, for the two inspectors there. We do have a couple of dozen cars for the police officers at the Fire, at the Police Department, a couple of, handful of vehicles assigned to the Fire Department, and a number assigned to Public Works. The two vehicles, the police vehicles and this vehicle, including the water truck, was recommended for approval to Town Council during the budget session in April, and Town Council recommended approval at that time.
Okay, how many total do we have?
Councilmember Walters, Council, I don't have the total count at this point in time, but we can definitely.
Wayne, do you have it?
Yes, about 193 total vehicles.
193 total vehicles?
That's correct, 190, and pieces of equipment. Public Works had 120 vehicles under the Utilities Department, Public Works Department, prior to joining the Fleet Maintenance. Then, with the Police Department, they added 54 vehicles when they came in as a Fleet Maintenance back last year. So, that brings a total of 174, and there were approximately 20 vehicles between Parks and Rec, the Fleet Motor Pool.
Okay, so 20.
And ma'am, that, that includes pieces of equipment also, which we consider in our fleet total, such as lawn mowers, JCBs, which are skidsters, and things like that.
Okay, is it necessary to purchase this vehicle at this time? Okay, is it necessary to purchase this vehicle at this time?
Pardon?
Is it necessary to purchase this vehicle at this time?
Yes, it is, ma'am. And this vehicle is more conducive to utilization by management and administrative portions because as we expand out into our land, it is a four-wheel drive vehicle. We now have remote stations in the fire station, the police substation, so it's conducive for us to have the appropriate vehicle to travel over this raw land as well as those areas that stretch out now 12 to 15 miles from the center of town.
Will it be labeled with the town of Florence emblem? I didn't notice any labeling that would be done on it, that's why I'm asking.
It'll be available to have a town of Florence.
Will it have the town of Florence emblem on the side?
Councilmember Walters, may if I may, if I can. All vehicles at this point have been labeled. This vehicle has not been termed to have been labeled. If you all may recall, later this fall, we'll be having a planning session at which one of those items will be the town logo. We have separate logos for the fire department, the police department. This is one thing that town council asked last year. That vehicle at this point does not entirely be labeled, but we will have it labeled as a government vehicle as such.
And is this the vehicle you'll be driving?
Councilmember Walters, I may be driving this vehicle, yes.
Okay. I would feel better if it was labeled.
We'll follow what the law says on that. There's a, if I remember right, there's something on the law that says about municipal vehicle being labeled to a certain degree. And there's also a problem with, I know some of the department heads for the county got in trouble, Tommy, you might be able to help me on this.
No, I don't know anything about it. There was some elected officials and some department heads with the county that got in trouble for not reporting the mileage on the vehicles they were using that were unmarked vehicles. I know that the sheriff's office has a policy on it that the employees are, I think they're charged, aren't they, Reuben?
Yes.
For the use of a non-vehicle, a non, an undercover vehicle, say.
Well, those are law enforcement, they aren't charged. No, but if they're non-law enforcement.
Non-law enforcement, but they're.
Either charged a commuter fee or a lease fee.
Yeah. And so, on the situation we've got here is that we have authorized our manager to have a vehicle, and we're going to follow the law and if it has to be marked or not. If the laws come down and says it will be marked, then it will be marked. If it's not, it won't be. But I, are you aware of that law? Okay. Okay. You have any other questions on this?
I think it should have a for official use only also.
There's some markings that have to be on it. So, I'm sure our personnel director can take a look at that and find out what's supposed to be on there.
Can we table it? I'd like to.
No, we're not going to table. I don't want to table it. I mean, you can make a motion to table if you want.
I'd like to make a motion to table it until we find out the legalities.
So, there can be a vote on that. I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table item C of the consent agenda until we can find out the legalities. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, if you vote yes, it means that you're for the motion. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion dies. Now, I need a motion on item C.
Make a motion to approve item C.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Item 10, new business. A, discussion approval disapproval of entering into a contract with EPS Group to design a new water line along State Route 79 from Caliente to Vista Hermosa in amount not to exceed $111,460. Ms. Mitchell.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to hire the EPS Group to design the water line between Caliente and Villa Hermosa. It's one that has been on the CIP list and want to move forward and get it designed.
Vista Hermosa. Vista. If you call it Villa and go out there and do it, you're going to get run out of town.
I stand corrected, Vista Hermosa. Thank you, sir. I do have Elijah Williams with EPS. Should you have any questions of either him or may be happy to answer those questions now.
John, this needs to be done, right?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions, John? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into a contract with EPS Group to design a new water line along Caliente in amount not to exceed $111,460.
I second it. We have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of EPA Group to design a water line along State Route 79 from Caliente to Vista Hermosa in amount not to exceed $111,460. Any discussion? I've got one for you, John.
Yes, sir.
What is the estimated, after we design it, what are we looking at the cost on putting it in?
I do not have that. I'll get my first estimate at approximately a 30% design. Elijah, we don't have that. I would expect it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 million to 1.5 million.
Okay. I don't have anything else, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 10B. Ordinance number 619-14, first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing certain territory contingents to the existing town limits of the town of Florence.
Of the town of Florence, Arizona, and providing for rescission of such annexation if the annexation is challenged. Magic Ranch Annexation Number 2013-01.
Mark? Mayor, council, this is the first reading of the proposed Magic Ranch annexation. As you know, the public hearing for this item was already conducted on September 9, 2013. It was at the Anthem K8 School, and we've had many, many, many discussions about the annexation and all the things that are occurring within the annexation since then. The Magic Ranch annexation obviously is the green area. The blue area represents the proposed Arizona Farms annexation, which is your next, next item. This particular annexation is just a little over four square miles. If both of the annexations are successful, you're looking at bringing the corporate limits of Florence from roughly 62 square miles to just over 68 square miles. Obviously, with that, there would be an immediate influx of population and the planned developments that would occur. Be happy to address any questions.
Any question from Mark? Mark, this is just a second reading only, right?
Mayor, council, this is the first reading of the annexation ordinance, so it would have to come back for a second reading. And we are looking, I don't know that the clerk has set the final date for that. It could potentially be on the 18th, which would be the next regular meeting, or it could be a date other than that. But that will be set on an agenda and posted appropriately, and that's when action would occur if we're able to proceed with this.
Thank you. Any member have any question for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Next item.
Item 10C. Ordinance number 620-14, first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing certain territory contiguous to the existing town limits of the town of Florence, Arizona, and providing for rescission of such annexation if the annexation is challenged. Arizona Farms Annexation Number 2013-02.
Mark?
Mayor, council, I think I addressed this in the previous presentation and be happy to address any questions if you have them.
Again, this is first reading, second reading will be announced later.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mark.
10D. Resolution number 1465-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Barclay Holdings XL IIII LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement, Annexation Number 2013-01, Barclay Property.
Mark?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a pre-annexation and development agreement with Barclay Holdings. Barclay Holdings represents the, all of the area within this commercial shopping center except for the big store, which is a separate ownership, which is at the Smiths, AKA Fry's Food Stores. So, all of the proposed inline shops and pads, which might be banks or fast food restaurants and so forth, is all represented by the Barclay Group. And we actually have just completed the development agreement with Fry's as well. That will be on the next agenda. So, this whole property here, both owners are looking forward to coming into the town and expressing a strong desire to be able, to be in a position to build this store in the coming years as development picks up. And with it, you will see that there, this is a little bit different than the traditional residential development agreements that we've had before, but there is a commitment to not increase the development impact fees that are applied on the property for the coming 10 years. So, if they're able, which we hope, to build this development within 10 years, they're going to be at the current rates, or if the impact fees go down, they'll be at the lower rate or whatever they become. After that period, they would be whatever the prevailing rate happened to be.
Any member of the council have any question, Mark? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1465-14.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1465-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10E. Resolution 1466-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Chi Construction Company and Arizona Corporation and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreements, Annexation Number 2013-01, parcel G and portions of parcels K and F at Magic Ranch Properties.
Mark?
Mayor, council, this is a development agreement with Chi Construction Company, which is a arm of DR Horton. DR Horton has been the home builder that's been out in this area of Magic Ranch building for some time. They were the pioneer in this area. They have some lots remaining in this area here, which is actually right around the area that some of the folks that spoke earlier tonight are living in this community. But those are some of their undeveloped lots. They actually own some additional homes that they're still under their ownership. They haven't sold them yet, but they're not party to the development agreement because they've already been billed, they've paid the fees, et cetera. The subdivision is 100% complete. So, at this point, they have a pretty straightforward development agreement where the impact fees would not be raised on them for 10 years. And then also, there's one unique factor, which Councilmember Walter, you brought up before, is that there is a $1,500 cap on single-family home permits. And we've tried to have a generally consistent formula in all the pre-annexation development agreements. I think you've seen that. But we're going to run into circumstances on each development that are slightly unique. And a unique case in this one and the next one with DR Horton is that we're talking about, we are working with the end user. We're working with the home builder that has made a substantial investment out in this area. They've already calculated their pro formas of what all their fees are going to be, their permit fees, their plan review fees, their development impact fees, their construction sales taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And what they found in their pro forma was that there was a differential in the fee structure when they got to their larger housing product. So, when they got to a home, or if they get to a home and as the market returns, that is in the 200 to 250,000 and above range, the calculation between how the county calculated the fee and how we calculated the fee brought it over, slightly over the 1,500. So, they just wanted to make sure that when they came into the town, actually, that they were, that there continued to be an incentive for a reason for them to come into the town, and they weren't actually coming into the town and being in a position where they would pay more to construct their homes in the town. So, that's where that particular situation came from. And then, of course, there is a, there's a 10-year period on the impact fee, but obviously, they hope and the town hopes that they're going to be wrapping up these lots, we would assume, within the period of two to three years, and then hopefully moving on to other opportunities that are going to be within the town of Florence.
Any member of the council have any question, Mark? Hearing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1466-14.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1466-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10F. Resolution Number 1467-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with DR Horton Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement, Annexation Number 2013-01, Magic Ranch, Parcels B and C Properties.
Mark?
Mayor, members of the council, I, same as what I said on the previous one applies, but I will take the opportunity to note that this is a different section of Magic Ranch. They have a whole lot more development to proceed with here. This is just immediately, it's right around the area of the Johnson Golf Clubhouse and so forth. Again, they would really love to be in a position where they could just come and finish off this subdivision and move on to other lands, such as perhaps, you know, some of the master plans that were proven here tonight. But I would like to say that, you know, when you're working actually with some of the end users, such as Fry's and DR Horton, you know, you're presented with a whole different bag of challenges sometimes, and there's some skepticism and some hesitancy sometimes. And I can say that it's just been a privilege to work with all the folks and to build that relationship with them over the past year, and we're hoping that we can complete the annexation because we will go from having one prominent master home builder in the community with Pulte and Anthem to having DR Horton in the community. And in this particular area, they're going to be in a position where they can get housing starts as soon as the market warrants it. So, it'll be a great opportunity for the town.
Thank you. Any question, Mark? Need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1467-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with DR Horton Incorporated, a Delaware corporation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1467-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10G. Resolution 1468-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Eldorado Arizona Farms LLC, an Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement known as Annexation Number 2013-01, Arizona Farms West Property.
Mark?
Mayor, members of the council, again, a couple of complicated pre-annexation and development agreements related to the project that we saw before. This is the agreement for, I got the wrong slide up there. Hold on one second. So, we're talking about the Arizona Farms property. We have two pre-annexation and development agreements for Arizona Farms. We have the one for the east, we have the one for the west. You'll see that the structure on the impact fee adjustment is that there's the same incentive that we've been talking about with other developers for the residential, but there is a slight incentive also for them to get some commercial going, hopefully, commercial employment, multifamily going within the next 10 to 15 years. So, there is an incentive for some of that development to occur. I will note that what makes Arizona Farms East and West, obviously, very unique and requires those terms is because this is a. requires those terms, is because this is a property, like I hinted at before, that is probably going to take 15, 20 years to develop out completely, because you're talking about the freeway corridor and school sites and town parks and a lot of new roads. There's, there's a lot of things that are going to go on with this, with this property. And again, in the agreement, you'll note on both of these that there is language that deals with the dedication of the public safety facility site, the reservation of the freeway corridor, the school dedications, the park dedications. We were able to work hard on these development agreements and, and just, we didn't have a whole lot of time. Eldorado acquired the property during the period of the annexation, and we've been able to kind of come full circle on these in just a, a matter of months in regards to their zoning and the development agreements. And we're very pleased with what we have to present to you tonight.
Thank you. Any members of the council have any question, Mark? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 1468-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1468-14. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10H, resolution number 1471-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Eldorado Arizona Farms LLC, an Arizona Limited Liability Company, and Blangley Arizona Farms 150 LLC, an Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement, annexation number 2013-02, Arizona Farms East Property. Ms. Echoff.
I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Here we go again. You don't want to talk.
Good God.
No question. Need a motion? I make a motion to adopt resolution number 1471-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1471-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10I, resolution number 1470-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with CMG 900 LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement, annexation number 2013-01-399 finished lots within Magic Ranch Property. Ms. Echoff.
Mayor, members of the council, this one, I will definitely have a, a brief discussion on. Really unique situation that this particular ownership group found themselves in, in the fact that they've acquired 399 finished lots out here in the Magic Ranch subdivision. So, what a, on one hand, what a great opportunity to have 399 finished lots, but on the other hand, it's a, it's a concern of when you're going to develop those, those lots. When they did pick up those lots from the previous owner, the previous owners actually had made some, some arrangements with the county that put them in a very attractive situation. So, as we were discussing this pre-annexation and development agreement, we found ourselves in the position of, of how to help them come into the town with, without them being in a, a worse financial position than they were to build in the, in the county. So, with every other entity, we've been, we've had a pretty close relationship with what that, what the impact fees had to be or what the fee structure had to be, and we were able to provide a small incentive to bring folks in. This particular property actually is the only, these are the only lots in, within these two annexations that actually have an agreement with the, with Pinal County, that they will, that they prepaid their transportation fee to the, to the county. I think this was in advance of the county having a, a, a transportation impact fee proper, but they made an arrangement with the county to prepay fees towards transportation improvements. The fee was paid, and as part of that agreement was that there would never be a transportation impact fee ever applied on the, on the property. So, they do have a recorded standing agreement, and as you know, we've worked with everybody to make sure that we've honored the agreements that they've, that they, they have in place in the county, whether it be their zoning or different fee structures and so forth. So, the, the only way to get to a point on this one where it ended up being, where they ended up not being harmed essentially and paying more to build homes in the town, was to have the reduced impact fee, as noted in the development agreement. But also, on this one, there is a commitment to, to not have a construction tail, sales tax for the, for the homes that are built within this, within this project. When the math is done, again, it's all about doing, doing the pro forma and what they're going to, what they're going to pay in the county, what they're going to pay in the town, and that was the only possible equation that was, that was out there, again, to make it worthwhile for them to come into the, to the town. We felt that it was beneficial. I'm sure the town manager and Mr. Manato could elaborate as, as necessary, but we felt it beneficial to bring this piece of property into the, into the town and come up with these arrangements because, again, we're talking about 399 finished lots, so we don't have to go through a process of, of zoning, preliminary plating, final plating, construction, acceptance of improvements, the whole, the whole nine yards. When they come into the town and they're, as soon as there is a, a market for new homes, they can immediately respond by, by selling, you know, X number of lots or all 399 lots to one or more home builders and be able to go vertical instantly, whereas in almost every other scenario, except for the few lots in Crestfield Manor, they'd actually would have to go through the whole engineering and development process, and they're looking at about a year and a half before they go vertical. So, this is a very nice piece to, to bring into the town and fits that last piece of the puzzle on the annexation. And I would be happy to elaborate, as, as would others, I think, if you, if you have questions.
Mr. Manato, is this legal?
I believe it is, Mayor. The, you know, the state has imposed some restrictions on the municipality's ability to provide waivers of tax, but they don't apply to this situation. And so, I think it is, it is within our discretion to provide essentially what is a waiver of the construction privilege tax that we would normally attach to this kind of business. But as long as it was deemed to be financially in the best interest of the town, which I think it is, I don't see any legal issues with it.
The transportation money has been paid to the county. Is there any way to get any of that back from the county?
I, I really don't know. I would, I would hesitate to be optimistic about that because I think it's unclear in what way the town, the county utilized those funds once received from the developer.
Maybe Ms. Rose can answer that question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the question. We would certainly stand behind you if you want to try to get the funds back. I understand they may have been appropriated in different sorts of ways through previous administrations at the county, but.
Thank you, George.
Unfortunately.
Any other question? Hearing none, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution number 1470-14.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1470-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, item 11, department reports. Department reports are attached.
Any member of the council have any questions? The manager on the department reports.
Not the manager, but within one of the department reports. Wayne.
Which one are, are you in? Public Works.
Public Works. 11B, section 8.
Okay.
So, when you list six vehicles were serviced for preventative maintenance and eight for repairs, and you give the ID numbers, is it possible for you to also list what department and the use of that vehicle?
Yes, ma'am, it is, easily.
Okay, what, can you, can you give me a breakdown, then, of what vehicles were serviced and what department, based on the coding that's below?
On the monthly report that you have in front of you?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a copy of mine in front of me, unfortunately.
I can read it for you if you'd like.
Yes, if you just read the first two letters, I can tell you what department.
Okay.
Okay. The first one, the first item is the preparing specifications for the items mentioned, two police vehicles, one motor vehicle, one water truck, one street sweeper. We received all bids on all those. The second one is the PD vehicle. The third one is just the procurement of some unique equipment that we need in order to fulfill our services fleet maintenance, oil recovery, AC recovery, et cetera, coolant recovery system, and a full diagnostic system based to handle, do electronic diagnostic of any equipment that we have within the fleet maintenance. The next vehicle is a police department vehicle. The next one is a fire department vehicle. The next two, which is one line item, is a street department vehicles. And then the next four are sanitation vehicles. We include maintenance on our trash trucks that we still have, and the pickups assigned to sanitation. So, that's why that we have sanitation vehicles. Another one, we retain pin assembly on the, on the sanitation vehicle, which is the SA nomenclature. Again, we, we, we run these vehicles monthly. Next one's a sanitation vehicle, and then the next one is a wastewater vehicle. WW is wastewater, and third one is IT vehicle.
Okay, now, for the sanitation vehicles.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
For the sanitation vehicles, because they have been out of use for so long, what is our plan for them? Are they continued to be run and operated?
Yes, we have, we operate them monthly to maintain, you know, the, the running of the vehicle. We run them about 20 miles out to the transfer station and back. Currently, we're investigating with two municipalities. One was Globe, and the other is Coolidge, on the sale of those vehicles on the rubbish trucks. We plan on maintaining one of them, the latest one, but the other, the other three would be maintained, would be sold to those entities if we can reach an agreement with them.
And if we do sell them, where will the money go from those sales?
As I recall, went to the sanitation fund, basically.
Now, would it stay in there as our long-term goal was to eventually build a transfer station? Would it join that $1.6 million?
Councilmember Walters, mayor council, yes, the, the sale of those trucks would go back into that fund. That fund is used very sparingly for operations. Council approved, I believe, 1.5 positions. Out of there, we have one gentleman that works full-time on sanitation, and we have additional help there. We, at some point, I believe it was councilmember Salia and, and Mr. Montano that did request to see if we can localize a transfer station. At this point in time, we are utilizing the transfer station, I believe it's right off of Hunt Highway, and Mr. Costa has been ensuring as to the amount of waste and what it does cost the town. So, we are due to come back to council probably in about six months to find out how cost-effective that is being. At this point in time, we had not been able to locate, though, a place in town limits for transportation.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
If, if I could add to that, that the, the report is, doesn't address the preventive maintenance, but we, we perform preventive maintenance for approximately 40 vehicles per month that we maintain, and that's in our weekly report. We, we report the preventive maintenance as well as the repair vehicles that we work on during the week. That's in our weekly report.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the council have any on departmental reports?
Yes, I have one for dealing with the police department. I spoke with Charles earlier, and I was looking for some information on it regarding the speed trailer that was on Main Street, southbound, downtown. And on June 9th, the concern at 3:33 PM, it showed the, the highest recorded speed was 52 miles an hour going down Main Street. So, of the number of vehicles that traveled down Main, Main Street, which 14,216, the average speed was 16 miles an hour, but those that were traveling above the speed limit was 8,029. So, this is down Main Street. What are we going to do about getting people to slow down in downtown area?
Councilmember Montano, mayor council, as, as we did talk, I, I do need to talk to Chief Hughes about that. I, I'm kind of concerned, too. As you're aware, Butte Avenue, Main Street, going to the north is the towns, but going south is ADOT. So, we'll have to figure something out. And it, it really does shock me that a car was going 50-plus miles an hour in the downtown area. That's very, very worrisome. So, we need to figure something out if that's the case, and, and I will get with Mr. Torrey on and Chief Hughes when he returns on Wednesday, and we will resolve something, figure something.
I'll have to go along with him because I happen to watch that street quite regularly. And let me tell you, there's a lot of cars exceeding the speed limit on Main Street. Second, I have a question to add to this. Out in Anthem, I noticed on the telephone poles or electric posts, there are speed signs, the ones that give you speed, just small, whose are those?
Vice Mayor Smith, council, those are the towns. The town put those up. There's one on Merrill Ranch Parkway in Anthem. I have talked to Chief Hughes to see if he can get some on Felix Road and also in the downtown area, too, so.
It'd be nice to have a couple of those on Main Street.
Ruben, did, did you see something different to?
This is located in the police report under BEAT 1.
Under what?
BEAT. B-E-A-T. So, you know, with the speed limit of 15 miles an hour and someone traveling 52 miles an hour, that's concerning.
Terry, get it back to, get, get back to the chief, that we need to be really addressing that, especially in the evening. Maybe rather than sitting out on the state highway, we set one in downtown or something, slow them down. Okay?
He'll southbound, north of the stoplight.
North of the stoplight?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's quite a few cars coming northbound also that are doing more than the speed. I think they're supposed to think they're on 79, but they're not, and they're going straight ahead, and they're jamming on their brakes when they get out of the, the post office because they're on the wrong street. But they're still doing tremendous speeds going down that street.
Just because Main Street's vacant at night doesn't mean it's a speed.
It's during the daytime.
That's 3:33 in the afternoon on a Monday.
That's when that was?
Yes.
I didn't think I went that fast.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, then, go to call the council, or second call to the public. Any mayor of the public like to speak?
Mayor and council, good evening again. Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. I'm standing before you to ask you, no, to implore you, to replace the proposed splash pad at Padilla Park with a recirculating water fountain. A recirculating water fountain will save water and will show the world that the Town of Florence cares about the water problem our region is facing during this long-term drought. The water from a splash pad would not recirculate. Instead, the spouting water from 10 spouts, which is the number I've been told it's going, it would have, would immediately become wastewater as it flows down the drain. The pad would be turned on when someone approaches it. At all of the times, the pad would remain inactive and dry and boring and potentially unsightly. A recirculating water fountain, in addition to conserving water, will provide a continuous gentle sound to block nearby traffic noise. Instead of a wasteful splash pad, please authorize the installation of a recirculating water fountain. water fountain at Padilla Park. It just makes good sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Denise Colart, Florence. Um, I was very upset when I got up to the mic before. I'm still upset, but I've calmed down. We had so many meetings to say that you guys kept this secret while you're pushing it. Uh, I don't know how you sit up there and take it, I really don't, because it's not true. Um, some of the stuff being put out in, in brochures on the election about our extravaganza and in the newspaper, it, it just hurts me. It's like, some people feel that the downtown area people don't deserve what you're planning, and I think that's so wrong. You know, I don't have any, any, I, other than the library, I probably will never go to the water park. I have a swimming pool that I've lived over seven years near and never been in it. But this is vital for the town and for people not to have come to the meetings and gotten the info, correct information as to how much this potentially is gonna cost to build, all of it. Um, and then they stand up here tonight and tell you it's terrible and it's too big and it's too fancy. Where do they, where do they get the feeling that it's too fancy? Is it too not, is, do the people down here not deserve something really nice? This has been in your plans for years. That's why you brought this piece of land over here years ago, from what I understand. And I so wanna see this go forward, as I said before. Also, about speeding, we have an Florence Gardens too. It's nice and quiet now, but in the wintertime, they don't know what speed limits or stop signs are for. So it'd be nice if they hung those things up on poles out there too and gave them some tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. John, you got something else?
Yes, sir.
I knew it.
Uh, my, my question to the, the council, maybe, I was talking to the planning guy, uh, the, the waivers of these fees for all these PADA's that are here, um, you know, the Fed has pumped billions, trillions of dollars into this economy and eventually inflation's gonna be kicking in here. And how are the calculus being generated? These, uh, transportation things for the, uh, fees that they pay for the, um, uh, the developers pay? Inflation's gonna continue to go up, but they're capitated for 10 years. Now, if those are real costs that are being assessed, that actually go to pay for roads, go to pay for lights, go to pay for these signs and so forth, and yet inflation's gonna be continuing over the next 10 years and by all sound macroeconomic theory, you would think it's gonna go up quite substantially. What, who's, who's gonna be paying for that? And then how are those calculations being, being assessed and then where's that burden gonna fall? The future residents of the town? Uh, I'd like to ask about that. The other, the other piece about, uh, the, the gal who was just talking about the pool, you know, it's, it's great to have a pool. Nobody's saying anything against having a pool, it's who's gonna pay for it? That's, that's the question. Who's gonna pay? And, um, so I'd like to have, how, how, how is it that they, they have special bond issues for the folks at Merrill? Special little zones, 'cause they're the direct beneficiaries of it. But the direct beneficiaries of the pool, how about a special district for those guys? That, that would be fair, wouldn't it? I- i- if it's, if it's good for the goose, good for the gander. It's just justice. It's a, it's about equality. It's about treating people with respect, treating people with the honor they deserve and not looking at them in some other, another way. It's just, you know? So anyway, I'd like to see if anybody could present how those economic figures are calculated, what those projections, what those budgets, how that analysis is conducted. If I can get that, please.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Say no movement, I close, call to the public, second one. Tommy, and call to the council, Tommy?
Just, just a couple of comments. Um, I'm not sure if our last workshop on, on that was televised or not. I don't know if Channel 11 picked that up, but, uh, a lot of that information was discussed at, at that particular meeting. Um, let's see, what are there things that I have? Uh, also, if, if staff could release some type of a PR thing to address maybe some of the questions that were asked tonight, maybe recap what we discussed at the, at the previous meeting. Uh, let them know that, that these items, we did discuss a lot of these items at the last meeting. Um, let's see. And I, Wayne, I don't know how you remember all of this information in your head, but that's just incredible. That's about all I got.
Thanks, Tom. Tara?
I have a few things tonight. In your PR statement, um, I'd also like you to look at, I've inquired before and I'd like it to be followed through, with the development impact fees, they are regulated by the state of Arizona, revised statute 9 dash 46305. And this Arizona revised statute states that aquatic centers do not qualify for use of impact fees as part of a recreational facility. I have requested from our town attorney to provide a public legal opinion regarding this matter, specifically inquiring the legalities of utilizing the impact fees collected from the Anthem at Merrill Ranch CFDs, whereas it is deemed outside of the service area. If we're looking at our prior infrastructure improvement plan ranging from 2013 to 2023, one will see a different plan and funding sources. Lastly, there is going to be a second work session on August 12th, Tuesday. I'm hoping it is going to be at 6:00 PM. And at that time, I would also request a complete operating cost regarding all facets of the community center. And considering that we've toured multiple facilities over the month of June, we can acquire them from those facilities to come up with a cost of what it will cost the residents to maintain this facility and where the cost is coming from. And in closing, the reason why I did not vote for the fleet maintenance vehicle is I believe that it needs to be marked and for official business use only and not for personal errands. Thank you.
Ruben?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, inform everybody about the passing of Ed Cunningham, who was a, I wouldn't consider him a pioneer, but as a farmer, rancher in this area, he, he sits in the same seat along with, with Emmett Rankin, with the Mahrez brothers, with Charles Whitlow and the Padilla brothers. You know, as a farmer, he farmed the community right here where Florence is, being here and graduating from Florence High School and going to school here in the late 1940s into the 1950, you know, and a Korean War veteran, you know, he sat on the Arizona Cattle Growers Association, the, uh, Nature's Conservancy, Soil Conservation, and, you know, he was a proud member of being of this community. And, you know, being 80 years old, approaching 81, you know, it's tough to see somebody of this community who's been around as an icon. You know, he was involved with the kids in school with FFA. He was on the school board for Kenwood School when it was still Florence Union High School and Union District. So he'd been around for a long time, but just being in this community as a farmer and then he owned the, the Whitlow Ranch after Charles Whitlow and had that for many years. It's just sad to see somebody of our community go like that.
Bill?
Well, uh, on the point on the splash pad, I would hope that that's gonna be recycled water, I mean, recirculated. I mean, it's not just gonna go down the drain, is it? Not really. I mean, I can't imagine us doing that.
I would.
I mean, I would think we'd have a pump there to, well, that, that's, that's wrong. We can't be just running water down the drain, no, that.
Uh, Charles, get with you after the meeting and explain that, since we can't discuss it.
Well, no, I'm just saying.
But I agree with you, Bill.
No, we can't. I, I mean, if that's the case, we need to redesign it or something if it's, even if it's not gonna be a fountain, if it's just gonna be a splash pad. I don't wanna see the water just running down into the sewer.
Right down the drain. Valerie?
I don't have anything tonight.
Tom?
On the splash pad, I do know that, uh, if you have a splash pad and you have recycled water, you're gonna have to put chlorine in it, et cetera. And that is gonna damage any of the grass or plantings you have around it, even with just a splash. So you either go with fresh water all the time or you don't have one.
Well, I'd like to see us go with a fountain and, and that something's gonna recirculate it. If we're just gonna run water down the drain, that's totally wrong. And that's the first I knew of this, of.
A fountain would be recycled water and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, anyways, how that goes. The only other thing I've got to say is, I've heard a lot tonight, and I've seen mailouts coming to my house from people running for office, with numbers on it for what this pool and library are gonna cost and the cost of upkeep, et cetera. They're nowhere close. It's time people got the right numbers. If you want to find out about it, talk to our staff. They'll be happy to get them for you. But to just pull figures out of the air, that seems to be what's happening, because they're sure not the right numbers. I can tell you that right now. So please, get your facts together, talk to staff, because they're way out of line. I've also seen signs out, maybe I've had more time to look this time 'cause I'm not running, but signs against people running that are untrue. There are signs out there saying that two guys that work, they're in the state house, voted against or voted for Obamacare. They're Republicans, they didn't vote for Obamacare. These are signs that people are putting out there to disgrace other people. And it goes the same. I mean, when you start throwing mud at the wall, it's gonna come back and hit you in the face, because it doesn't all stick. Let's try to work together. Let's try to get the right facts and figures. And I know our staff will do it for you. Let's help us all help, let's do it right.
I'd like to address some issues that are brought up in the call to the public tonight. On the, Tom brought up one, I'm on the cost of the swimming pool and the maintenance cost. We don't know what it is exactly. We've asked for those figures. Those figures can be presented to us before we vote on it. We'll take a look at it at the time we get the figures. But the $7.5 million and $750,000 that a couple of people have put out on their campaign poster is not right. They don't know what they're talking about, I'm sorry. And if either one of them are elected as a council, I have to work with them for another two and a half years. But let's get our story straight on that. On the amount of usage at the pool, the usage could be up, no doubt about it, if parents will let their kids go to the pool due to the condition of the pool. That pool has not been maintained properly. You cut your feet on the bottom of it when you're, when you're in there. Now, the other thing, let's take a look at Anthem. We know for a fact that Anthem doesn't have their pool open all the time. So this will give their children another opportunity to have a place to go swimming. I think that that's a great idea for the whole community. As far as that pool is not just for the core people, it's for everybody in the town limits. And those that wanna come in to use it from outside the town can also use it. Costs are gonna be developed. Our recreation department will come up with charges that are reasonable for people to utilize that pool. Do we think it's gonna make money? No. Is it gonna get people into town? Yes. Comment was major, spending our money. That money is, yeah, it's the town's money, but we have been entrusted by the citizens of this community to spend it wisely and to get the best bang for the buck. We believe we're doing that on this facility that we're putting over here, a first-class facility that will draw additional people to Florence. The idea of impact fees being spent in certain areas because certain people put them in there, impact fees are for the community. They are structured, so that we spend them where we can for the betterment of Florence. What is the percentage of impact fees from, from, uh, Sun City? I don't care. Sun City is part of Florence. We, the elected officials, have been appointed to spend these monies the best way we think we can. Community facility districts, for those of you that don't know, were set, when we did Anthem, there's community facility districts out in Anthem to pay for the infrastructure. The infrastructures being the roads, sidewalks, and things like that. Not the water in the sewer, the street light districts also. But they are for one area of, of town. They are not for the whole town. The whole town does not pay the CFD, just those people. And they are supposed to be notified upon the, on the purchase of a home that they're in the CFD or they're in any kind of a special, uh, development district. If they're not, then they need to go back to the people that sold the home and file a lawsuit against them. Period, end of story. I have been told that the bonding that we're going out for, well, some people may not believe it, some people, all I know is what, I can go by my staff reports, that this is, even if we go for bonding on this facility, it's not gonna raise your taxes. The people that are going around saying it's gonna raise your taxes don't know what in the heck they're talking about. Come talk to our staff, our staff will tell you. If you can believe our staff, because I've been told we can't believe our staff, that is wrong. You can believe our staff. If we catch them lying to you, they won't be our staff. None of, none of them sitting down here would, if this council thought that our staff was lying to us. We are putting together a facility that this community can be proud of for years to come with that recreation department. It will develop the north area of town. It's gonna bring, you, you were just watching, watch it. As my wife said, and I agree with her, Anthem is a part of Florence. Florence Gardens is a part of Florence. We are Florence. I knew this was coming up when, when I was the mayor before and Pulte came out there because of different lifestyle. You folks chose to live in that. You folks knew what you were getting into if you bought it. But you are part of Florence. Whether you like it or not, I, I didn't want it to be Merrill Ranch. I wanted it to be Merrill Ranch at Florence or in Florence. Now, like I was my hot horse, we have a very important election coming up in February 20, what, 27th? What, what's the election day?
August 26th.
August 26th? Uh, they, uh, Home Rule. Home Rule is very, very important that citizens of Florence vote and pass. If not, we are gonna be taken back probably eight, nine years budget-wise. You will see layoffs, you will see cuts in services if we do it, if we don't pass Home Rule. It's very important to look on that long ballot you're gonna be getting. Democrats get a short one this year. Uh, you Republicans gotta, uh, you gotta look down the ballot. Independents have to depend on which ballot they ask for to hook. But we have to, we need to pass Home Rule. Staff cannot dictate one way or, or tell you yea or nay. It's against the law. The council can. Council members can speak up for it, but the, we have passed it every time it's come up and we need to continue passing it in order for the better of the lives of, of everybody here in Florence. Without any, a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, second adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.